Good evening and welcome to our final budget meeting. I would like to let you know that Chris Gaster is on line. We actually have a quorum and we actually have Mr. Kelly, who is Patrick Kelly, who's on the way in as we speak. The first thing we have to do is call an order and accept an approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may, item number eight on the consent agenda specifically mentions January 11th for a date.
July.
July, I'm sorry. Thank you. July 11th for a date and we're going to debate that date in new business, so I would make a motion to move item number eight off of the consent agenda and to the bottom of new business, just in case we need to amend that date.
So, Chris, if you happen to be looking at the agenda, Mr. Gaster, what we're going to do is number eight, that's under consent agenda, is going to actually be number five in the new business, okay?
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion about the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We now have the consent agenda in front of us. I know it looks like it's a lot of things that's on there. All the material is provided to the board in advance and all of this, every one, all the ones that I have seen on here so far have already gone through finance. Our finance chair has actually spoke with me in depth about them. He is actually on vacation and so at the board, I'd like to open the floor first to see if anyone will have any questions concerning anything at all on the consent agenda. Speak now for, forever hold your peace.
Madam Chair, I looked over all these items and they seem pretty redundant from previous years, so I have no questions at this time.
Same for me, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Chris?
No, I looked over everything and everything was good for me.
And Dr. Dossenbach actually took a little extra time to go over some of these with me, particularly the board association memberships. None of them are lobbyists and all of them are assisting and bringing down the costs for teachers' professional development. So, further, no further discussions.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we have new business and it is the employee referral bonus, which I'm very excited about. If Dossenbach would like to explain.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. In an attempt to hopefully be able to fill some vacancies in some high-need areas, we are proposing an employee referral bonus. Essentially, a current employee within the district could refer another employee to join us in Lee County and each of those individuals could earn funding depending on the type of position and in some ways the school that they would be working in. We did put some eligibility requirements in order for our current employees to be able to earn that funding, have to earn less than $75,000 to qualify. Any employee in finance or human resources, since they do have access to those files, would not qualify, along with any school-based administrator or their spouse.
Dr. Dossenbach, could you hold for one second?
Yes, ma'am.
The question just fell off.
Hey, this is Chris. We're at Hill Solutions. Our hours are Monday through Friday.
I have an answering machine with him, but let the minute show that we now have, Mr. Kelly is here and we still have a quorum. Let's move forward. Go ahead.
The bonus details for a classified hire would be $500 for certified. It would be $1,000 and for certified at one of our low-performing schools, which would be Ingram, Eastleigh, Wesley and Lee County High School, that for certified would double. I do want to point out that eligible positions for certified would be English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, E.C. and Pre-K, so that would exclude C.T.E. elective and enhancement teachers, which for the most part are a little easier to find right now. As far as classified, it pretty much is open to virtually every classified position, including instructional assistants, custodians, child nutrition employees, E.C. assistants, bus drivers, ESL assistants, maintenance, bus garage and technology. Both the Lee County Schools employee referring someone and the person coming to our district would have to fill out two separate forms, which are attached. We would pay in two installments in November and February and that is for a couple reasons. You know, one, we want to make sure the employee is here and in good standing and stays here for at least some period of time. The program has been capped at $125,000 and the way we came to that amount is we looked at all of the qualifying positions that we currently have vacant. That's around $250,000 if we filled every position, so we capped it at half of that at $125,000. And we also capped any individual within our district cannot earn more than $5,000 through this process. You will see a chart below. I do want to point out that those are not all of our vacancies. Those are the vacancies that would qualify for receiving this referral bonus and I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have. As a point of information, this will be paid using ESER funding.
Is there a deadline by which the person must be hired in order for the...
Yes, ma'am. And sorry, I skipped over that. This will begin, if approved, tonight, July 1 and go through anybody hired by October 1st.
Thank you.
Great project, I really do and I think we should make sure that our public affairs officer gets this information out as long as, and also the ones that they also do with like the Head of Class Award and all those, that whole education committee. If we can just keep advertising this and putting it out, I think that'd be very productive for us. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No, I just, I want to say thank you to Dr. Dossenbach and the administrative team for bringing this forward and I'm particularly impressed with the targeted nature of it to fill our most difficult positions, so I appreciate it and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the employer referral bonus plan as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have Ms. Jones. Evening, Ms. Jones. You look like you might be working 12, 14 hours a day.
Madam Chair, you have before you and members of the board, you have before you the budget amendments. I did email those to you guys around a little bit prior to four o'clock this afternoon as soon as we got them off the printer, so I am open to any questions that you may have in relation to the budget amendments.
Ms. Jones, did anything come to you as a surprise during the amendment process?
No, typically this is normal for us, just accounting, making sure that we've accounted for all revenues and so forth. I will tell you in Fund III, the reason for having to increase, typically we did not have to do anything in federal, but because we were able to claim more indirect costs from the ESER funding, we did have to, typically I don't have as much in federal at this point, but that was pretty much the only thing. We were trying to maximize funds, so we did do a little wiggle, more so this year than typical, just so that we could make the best use of our funds.
Board member have any questions? If you don't mind, my comment I made earlier was not to say that you look tired, it's just to acknowledge how hard you have worked on this and if you don't mind, we'll take this moment, I would like to let the board know about two great things that happened. They were able to find funding that we could not use for the SROs and we actually ended up giving the county commissioners $130,000, or at least allowing them to bill us more and they were, we allocate those things. The second thing is I hear you have opened up our home at Central Office of Montgomery County. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that's kudos to our IT department. I, you know, thank the good Lord, we don't have those kind of issues, but I know it's a lot for you to do and a lot of people moving around and we just want to recognize that and let you know, we appreciate it. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Madam Chair, barring any other discussion, I would move to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Okay, next we have the calendar events and...
Vote on that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the calendar events and if you will look at our calendar, the difference between this and the previous calendar is we have our board retreat for the school board is on the 18th, so I've made phone calls individually to see if there would be support for this before we actually did it. So, the final recommendation was that we had the retreat. The retreat would be from like nine to four and the board meeting would start at 5:00 PM. So, we would leave the retreat area and then come here for the board meeting and that way you're only missing one day away from your families. Does anybody oppose that plan? Question at all on that plan? I don't want to force anything on anyone, it's just the staff talked to me and, you know, we try to be conservative and we also have the lawyer teaching the ethics class during our retreat and it will cost us less money to have him coming back and forth, if that makes sense.
Madam Chair, there was some discussion of canceling another meeting. Is that fallen by the wayside?
The one in August?
Correct.
It was brought to my attention that August is usually normally just a lot of hiring and we may want to leave the August meeting open or as an option for call-in if people were going to be on vacation. There are only four months out of the entire year that is mandatory by law for the Board of Education to meet. I know we meet monthly and I know we enjoy doing that and I'm not against continuing what we're doing, I just wanted to keep that option open so you guys would have individual time with your families because the performance audit, which will be presented at the retreat, is very detailed and it will require a substantial amount of work for our board committees. But as it stands today, if no one disagrees, we'll leave it like it is right now, the one you have in front of you, where we're meeting on the 18th instead of the 11th and then in August, we will deal with August when we get through with the retreat.
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, under the new business was the resolution date.
I think we've got the Superintendent/Search Consultant, RFP. That's number four on the new business.
Superintendent/Consultant/Search, we had that, that was written up by our lawyer and he just, he wants to know if this was okay with the board and looking at time restraints, what would you like, how long would you like for it to go for? The average time to get a consultant does not have to be to three to four months, which is normally what we have to do when we're doing applications for a job, but for the consultant purposes, y'all can actually have a shorter date and time.
I would like to think that we could get consultant bids in by the retreat date, that would be almost three weeks. Yeah. Bid package out for three weeks and then we should be able to do something by the board meeting in July, or at least by August, I would hope.
Can, can staff get it posted by the 4th before we leave? I don't want to put our, I mean, today's Friday, 4th of July is Tuesday, or don't want to put our, our staff out. Is that something that we need to consider?
Personally, I don't think so because it's already written.
Am I adding to the website and that kind of thing and is that something that's...
Done in one day, Chris? Okay. I just, this is just a thought. I would think if you guys are comfortable with it, not only could they get this out, but we could also notify, Jamie Ladati made a huge list, remember all the other consultants other counties had used, and somehow be able to reach out to them, possibly just to send them a simple email and that, that will give them all an opportunity for any consultant that has been used in North Carolina. We have a huge list, particularly even outside of our region, that were, will be given the opportunity to apply for this, so we could possibly have it done in two weeks or less. And then that way it gives us plenty of time before the retreat. And that is still open for discussion. I just know Jamie did a lot of work in advance on that.
I think we could probably, you know, proactively send those out, you know, just send a link, send an email, send whatever. As far as the contact person, have we considered who that should be?
For the consultant?
Yes, for the bid packages to come in. Right now, it's, it's left as a blank. Or at least the version I'm looking at, are we looking at the same thing?
Normally, our, the consultants come in and I, I think our normal procedure is that they go through, do they not go through finance so they make sure they meet all the legal obligations before we can hire them as a consultant?
I'm saying as far as when they come in, would it go to Susan Britt, you know, address to Susan Britt, Lee County Schools until date and time?
What do you normally send them to? Does anybody know?
Yeah, normally it's to the superintendent, but since it's the superintendent's...
That is correct.
I think Susan Britt would be the...
And then Susan, the process for that is once you get them, then you have them approved by the finance, am I correct? Okay. Because we don't need to be looking at consultants if they're not qualified, if that makes sense. So, let's, we'll add Susan's name in there, date in it for two weeks out and...
Two weeks from now?
Yes.
So, 14 July?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Say two weeks from Monday.
Yeah, what date would that give us?
Monday's the 17th.
The 17th? And our retreat's on the 18th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that'll work. And I can come sign that tomorrow, unless you have to have me stay? Okay. Okay, so we agree, it goes to Susan Britt. The deadline's the 17th of July.
Five o'clock PM? Is that what time the office closes on that?
Fridays they close at four, I think.
This will be Monday.
It's a Monday at 5:00 PM? 5:30 PM? In that case, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the Superintendent/Search Consultant, RFP, as detailed in the discussion here tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Back to the one that we took off the consent agenda and is now a new business and that would be the 2022-23 budget resolution.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the date in the budget resolution to July 18th.
Well, it's because we just changed the meeting date. That's all it is, is to bring it in line with when we're going to see it next, so I would second that motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 1A, 3 and A6 to discuss confidential student information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now going closed session. Thank you.
We're now back in open session.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Human Resources report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're closed. Done.